Hello, has anyone signed up to speak with us?
No one signed up.
Okay. Let me guess. Yes, well, hold on a second. Since no one signed up, we got a lot to get through, so let's get through it and we'll try and get to you at the end, right? Yes. Yeah, but we usually ask people to sign up too. You know the routine. I'm gonna hold you to two minutes. Fair deal. Go for it. I have no idea. Oh, look, there's a mic there. All right.
Okay. With a tall lady. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Diana Cole. I'm a marriage and family therapist for many, many years, still in practice. And I've been advocating for the Healthy Relationship Skills course to be implemented here. And I know that the Ruler course has helped the teachers be more sensitive to that. But I'm still working on, and you can see, if you see, I have tons of little notes of calls to the legislature. At this point in time, the legislature has it on board, but not the Senate. And I'm still in contact with Vivian Cook, who is also one of the sponsors, to see where we are with that in the legislature. So I just wanted to update you on that, that I'm still working on that. And also still understanding that we need the course because there's not really enough time for a health teacher to teach all the skills you need to have a healthy relationship, or even what a healthy love is. So I'll make it, that's two minutes?
I'll let you know. Let's see. No, that's a minute and five seconds. Thank you.
Oh, can I have another minute then?
I was hoping that I could do a quote, that it would be put in the minutes. Okay?
You have, you have a whole thirty seconds left.
Hey, well, this is a Washington Irving quote from the early 20th century, over a hundred years ago. Wise man who, this is his quote. There is sacredness in tears. They are not the sign of weakness, but of power. They are the messengers. Oh, no. They are more powerful than ten thousand tongues. They are the messengers of overwhelming grief and unspeakable love. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee responses? It's on you, Pat. I'll say that's a lovely quote. Thank you for that. All right, moving right along. Approval of minutes in the last meeting?
Fine by me.
We have the best minutes taker in the whole world. All right, the first thing we're gonna start discussing today is facilitating our learning around challenging topics. Is that where we're gonna go with first matter? All right. Take it away.
Just to make sure everybody can hear. All right. All right, so you'll see, Tricia, do you mind putting up the PowerPoint, the last slide? I'm gonna give this, the framing that today we're gonna be talking about, critical conversations and as well as social emotional learning. Thank you all who are joining us online as well. All right, no problem. So we started the last committee meeting, or I should say ended, with as we're attempting to create spaces where we are centering students and the re-centering of marginalized voices and celebrating the genius of students while also acknowledging that mistakes will happen. We will make mistakes in these conversations. What, what do we do? And so I wanna present one of the texts that we reference in anti-marginalization curriculum writing by Matthew Kay called Not Light But Fire. I actually brought, I'm sorry, I don't have copies for everyone in the audience. But I just wanted to take a moment and point out on page sixty if folks want, actually it's page fifty-eight. Wanna take a minute and open the text to those numbers. And I just wanna give, I just wanna give two, two minutes to review that section as a framework. And for those who are joining virtually, it is a roadmap for educators, specifically secondary educators, to think through before reading material or responding to any crisis. So in this map, this is an example of what department leaders could use in their department PLC at the secondary level. There is a social studies teacher actually at the High School who has used this to practice among adults using material and articles and preparing to facilitate those conversations and dialogue. And so Matthew Kay has, is just releasing similar texts for elementary schools with structures, classroom structures that can be put into place. And we will be integrating it into the anti-marginalization curriculum writing this summer and that professional development, as well as working with this text as administrators in our PLC. Linked in the slide deck, you're going to see a document called Days After. And that's another example of resources. So the other day I was talking with a student and they were sharing how they really appreciated that their teacher set up two spaces in use the adjoining classroom after the most recent school violence, school shooting to provide a spot for students who wanted to talk and have a conversation and had questions. And then for students who did not need to engage in that at that moment in time, they could continue with working independently on some projects with the co-teacher. And so the student said, boy, that was really helpful. So this is a document where we highlight some of the instructional strategies on how to facilitate conversations. There are hyperlinks to norms and then references to ruler, as well as lessons taken from this packet that we looked at last, last time, the Let's Talk from Learning for Justice. Which is the third document linked in this. So I'm gonna pause because those are three examples of resources that are available that we wanna lean on as we're doing this work. What questions do you have for me?
Colleagues? All right, well, they are paying for their brilliant responses, let me just say. So I sent, I sent Mary and Lily a very rudimentary thought map that I had scribbled down after our last conversation at the last meeting when Erin pointed out some of our kids were having some trouble with the material, how it was being presented. And I added, I'd heard from both black and white teachers that they're both, that, that they, that regardless of their race, they're becoming skittish about trying difficult things. Because in fact, either perceive the real backlash. And I will say that this is, as we could expect, infinitely more thought out and intentional and intensive. That's what I scribbled on a piece of paper. In fact, reading this real quickly, like, I'm thinking to myself, if only all of the people in education could have had the legal education experience of the Socratic method. This is really what they're talking about. One plus one doesn't equal two. We're gonna put you in the dryer, sprint it around, figure it out. So I like this. I like where it's going. And I will also add to Erin's point last time, I have seen both in classrooms doing talking circles on race and racism for a decade, doing the work. There is a moment in which the empowerment of marginalized young people in particular could become an opportunity for them to finally push back against all the things they haven't been able to articulate. And that is not easy for young majority people to sit there and have to somehow wrestle with things that in their minds happened two hundred years ago, right, or two hundred and fifty years ago. So there has to be a space for that as well. It just has to be. And I'll say also, I gave a couple of talks at ASMs in LACS where I caught the kids making fun of a kid who had Trump paraphernalia on. Right? I'm like, this is, this is, this is not who you are. That child should be able to stand there in the middle of the floor, wearing whatever they want. And if you have an issue with it, you should wrestle with that issue. You don't get to simply demean that child because his or her reference point is different than yours. So if our faculty members can do this with fidelity, it's going, it's, it's fantastic. I might still advocate that a thought map might be useful for those who need some initial support, right? Those visuals are very, very useful when people are trying to wrap their minds around complex things. So just, just a thought from my perspective. You guys have anything to add?
Well, I'll, I'll add that I'm, I'm coming into this without a lot of the academic background in putting together conversations like, like this. And I haven't had as, anywhere near as much experience as you have, Eldred. And so I really need to, to study this more. But one of the things that really resonates with me is your last comment about allowing people to have, to come from different places without being attacked and seeing if something productive can be made from that. I'm gonna be sixty-four next month and looking back and thinking about this issue in particular, I had been reflecting much lately on how seldom other people trying to persuade us what, as individuals, what we should think, how little that works. It, you know, in a, in a superficial conversational way. And I, I I had a beloved uncle who was very, very, very conservative, right wing, Reagan, Bush, Trump, whatever, Republican good, anything bad. And my husband and I kinda lost it with him around twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. It's like, you're Catholic, how can you support this guy? He's been divorced three times and he's a liar, right? Sorry. And when we got off the phone, our wonderful daughter said, you know, when you talk that way to Uncle Bob, you sound exactly to him the way he sounds to you. And that was like, that was a revelation for me. And I just, I changed my whole life. You know, just, just, just stopped trying to marshal facts, quote, facts, my facts, to change the mind of an eighty-eight-year-old who was thinking in a different way. And that, moving beyond that, to have productive dialogues is something that I personally don't have a lot of experience with. But it's what's, it's what needs to be done. And the whole issue is how do we set up a an environment where one can have those productive dialogues? I, I'm not totally sold that it will happen, but I'd love to see it.
I just wanna add, I just find this fascinating because Mary and I had a conversation this morning about how just our generational placement impacts our views of the world and how like for us nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety feels like yesterday. But like to your point, Eldred, students today, elementary students, you know, slavery feels like ages ago. And, and, but it's not. And, and I don't know, so much of this is just interesting to me when we have conversations and tough conversations and looking at this example where it's talking about expressing yourself clearly. I just think of what other people are bringing to the table based on just generational experiences. And then I can't help but think when you say expressing ourselves clearly in a practice like this, how, if you do this practice, I hope you give space to allow someone to express their self in written word because sometimes speaking is not easily clear for some people. Myself is a good example. But I, it's just, all of it is so exciting and fascinating. And I feel like there's so much work in conversations that can help us get better with all of these things. Yeah, I would, I would want, I wanna add that I saw the other day in a classroom a piece of artwork that a student did as the primary document for building background knowledge on the topic they were about to discuss. So to celebrate the many different modes and forms of communicating, I think is also really, really important in this work and to think about the placement of that. Because when we're having these conversations, those different modes can be used before, during, and after. And it's, it's not a linear, we have to start with this written form to, to have the conversation. And on page eighty-four, I just wanted to draw your attention to that because these essential questions are, mirror some essential questions chosen or developed by teachers in anti-marginalization curriculum writing. For example, for those who aren't looking at, at a text right now, ninth grade identity. Who am I? How do I interact with my environment? And how does the environment affect me? So that when we have tension points in the conversation, going back to the essential questions to ground the conversation, is a strategy advocated in this text that is very helpful. For tenth grade, systems is the theme. How are systems created and defined? How do systems shape the world? What is the role of the individual in systems? So those are, are some examples.
Powerful, again, powerful. So two questions. How is this kind of insight instruction shared with the staff members?
Now, the way it's, the way it's structured, building administrators have two Wednesdays a month where they can, the first and third, where they can define the agenda for a staff-wide experience. So I think this could be used more during that time. As far as the second and fourth Wednesdays, teachers and departments define how they wanna use that time. And so this is one option they could pull from during the PLC. Yeah.
About negotiated a thousand years ago?
Yes.
But again, you said can choose to.
Right. And the, the communal experience on the first and third facilitated by our building leaders is also part of the contract. And that's, the building leader sets the agenda.
And this is high on someone's agenda?
What's that?
This is high on someone's agenda?
Well, it's high on my agenda. I think it's a, I think it's a process as more and more teachers participate in anti-marginalization and have, as we all know, a socio-political context that demands us to be well-versed in this practice. We're gonna want opportunities to practice it.
And my second question, really quickly, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues again is, all right, so this is ninth, tenth, and eleventh, but every adult I know could use going through the same set of questions. But I know we have talked about our adults and staff doing identity work. But I'm not, imagine, we're not exactly sure what that means as board members.
Yeah, that's actually one of the essential questions. Who am I? And how does my racial, ethnic, and cultural identity show up in the classroom systems and structures I design?
And they're asked that question during summer PB, also in the PLCs?
So that particular strand is an eight-week experience. In fact, we have a cohort finishing their eighth week tonight over in the boardroom. And then it culminates, they have four to six months to compile a portfolio and present, make a ten-minute presentation to a panel of community members on how their racial, ethnic, and cultural identity shows up in the learning spaces and experiences they are engineering for students.
That's amazing.
And this Let's Talk is more elementary, or I shouldn't say not more elementary focus, but touches on elementary classrooms and some strategies more than this one.
So Mary, I wanna ask a question. When I see this, and I, I feel like I should read a couple of these out loud for anyone watching who might not understand what we're talking about. But like ninth grade identity, who am I? How do I interact with my environment? Tenth grade systems, how are systems created and defined? What is the role of the individual in systems? Eleventh grade, what causes systemic and individual change? What's the relationship between the self and a changing world? So when I see this, I wanna, again, our meeting earlier, I just keep having flashbacks too. But I mentioned in our meeting how I speak to college students about inclusion and present every semester. And I remember talking about inclusion and disability. And one of the students asked, listen, this sounds really important, but I'm really invested in this. And I don't know how it can add this to what I'm working on already. And I don't know if it was environmental or racial justice or, you know. So when I see this and I think about the work that we're doing as a district, is there a way to let people know that it doesn't have to be any one thing? I feel like we look at these questions and we think systemic change. And when I, in my experiences in talking to older students who get it, you really have to say it doesn't have to be systemic, just having knowledge of things and caring about things in the work that you're doing. Just knowing about multiple issues that need our attention, you can create change. And so, you know, knowing some of the resistance, if you will, to viewing bigger issues, you know, if we're looking at, I think about the things that are presented at the school board, like we had the green team present and how amazing that was, right? So you think about environmental systemic change for climate change. And you think about LGBTQ, and you think about disability. I feel like beyond race, we can change so many things with these same things. And it doesn't have to be just one thing at a time. It's a very long-winded way of asking, you know, what other things are we tackling within this framework?
It's a, it's a really great question. And how I'm hearing it is how do we celebrate the intersectionality between everything we're doing? And these examples are, are really great essential questions because when you read them, you don't know the answer to it right away. And it keeps us curious. So to be able to touch on those on any topic, so for example, last summer, there were a couple of educators working on communication. And specifically, communication in their classroom and how do people communicate? And it was a social emotional learning unit on, that celebrated how people move, how they express themselves. And they worked in assistive technology and how that's being used. So that that was, that component was centered in their case study. Because how children communicate looks different. And how this generation is seeing children learn to read and maybe communicate and access the material is different than my experience.
All right, well, this is, this is our, that's what we're here to do in curriculum, get schooled. This is, uh, this is, this is great. We gotta poke our head into one of these PLCs, man, and see how this gets down. This just sounds amazing. But Mary, you just helped us segue, so I appreciate it. Let's leave this topic for now because we have two additional important ones to get to. Can you walk us through our current social emotional learning SEL structure and framework? It's all part of the same mini-presentation shared with us, right?
Yes. Oh, there it is. Excellent. Hi, my name is Carrie Burke, Director-
Yes. Oh, there it is. Excellent. Hi, my name is Carrie Burke, Director of Health Services and Wellness. Very good to be here with you this evening and happy to be talking about social emotional learning and to give you a little update, um, with respect to ruler implementation training. As a means of, of giving you a, a brief snapshot of what has happened more recently, we participated, when I say we, thirty-seven of us from across the district, all schools were represented in nearly every category. I can think of an employee, uh, in terms of, um, teachers, social workers, school psychologists, building administrators, district administrators, um, had the opportunity to participate in a virtual conference on the ruler program focused on implementation. So it was two afternoons, two, three-hour blocks in March. And it was, just as a matter of online conferences, it was fantastic. They, whoever they contracted with was really good in terms of the, the online platform and how information was organized. There was keynote speakers each day with breakout sessions. It was really, really well done. I, I want to highlight a couple of things about the conference, well, namely, um, and there's a link here, uh, the keynote speaker, whose name I'm probably not going to pronounce correctly, uh, Dr. Dashner Keltner, uh, who's written a book about awe. And I've linked in here for your future reading or reference, an article from The Atlantic about the quiet profanity, profundity of everyday awe. And the way it connects to our work is, I think, in multitudes, um, a lot of teachers and staff picked up on this thread of awe as well. And so how he defines awe, or at least how he's sharing this presentation was the feeling you have when you encounter something that is vast and mysterious, and it transcends how you understand the world. And as I read that and I re-listened to his presentation, I couldn't help but think that it reminds me of a lot of young people I know, people in my life personally and who I come through, come in contact with through this work, that they are often mysterious. And, uh, as they, uh, as we engage with them, they can transcend our understanding of the world. As this, um, as Dr. Keltner discusses, awe can be found in both little and big moments. He talks about eight moments where wonders of life, the moral beauty of others, collective movement, nature, visual design, music, spirituality, big ideas, and encountering the beginning and end of life. I think in many ways, this concept of awe and social emotional learning are calling us to be present and to be open to the experiences of students, to the identity of students, and leaning into our learning forward agenda where we are partnering with students, we're centering them as leaders because it creates opportunities for them to, it creates opportunities for awe, honestly, as well as our educator identity work and the revelations that occur when people are examining themselves, their history, their culture, their beliefs, as well as our anti-racist curriculum, moments of revelation, of understanding. So if you could, Tricia, would you mind clicking on the participant reflections link? That first one, I think, again, captures this, we did a, we shared a jam board because we were across buildings, we were not physically in the same space. And so here you can, can see some of the, uh, the things that were captured by those participants. And again, reflecting on this theme of awe. One commented, the concept of awe helps me reframe my teaching with students, how I'm trying to tap into their emotions to make a connection. It's a stepping stone to critical thinking. Another, um, mentioned that, uh, the highlights for them included being other-oriented and that it has to be all of us caring for each other and recognizing the moral beauty, the sense of awe and kindness around us. Creating opportunities to experience awe through instruction environment and activities that is about our physical spaces as well as the activities occurring in our classroom. To take the concept of awe and connect it across all areas of teaching and beyond, the classroom, families, colleagues, and buildings. And that, again, in acknowledgement, awe can be experienced in the everyday, need to be present to notice impact of nature, culture, and moral beauty. And again, this is not designed to be, uh, uh, comprehensive in terms of things that were captured, um, or experienced by the participants. But I did want to, uh, center the, the perspectives around awe because I thought they were really revelatory and well-connected to our SEL work as well as our work in learning forward.
Square that, uh, note that jumps out at me is the one you mentioned about, um, burnout and the limits of self-care. I mean, we keep hearing that more and more that that's a, uh, that's an unfortunate pill we've been selling to individuals if their individual efforts at self-care can somehow overcome malignant institutional process. So that's really, everyone really strikes me just paying attention, looking to see how these become real in our environment. I'm assuming this means that SEL now, well, ruler in particular, is going to move from adult learning more quickly into engagement with students. Cause I know we spent some time educating the educators.
Yes, and that work is ongoing. We've built ruler into our new teacher orientation. I mean, to, again, the aim of sustainability and, and fidelity. Uh, we also have carved out time for building-based summer work groups. So groups of several, um, staff getting together over the course of summer to draft plans around their goals for equity, to map out meetings and leverage the tools of ruler and TCIS, among others, and to look at the structures to support implementation engagement around social emotional learning. So across the many vehicles that we have for driving change, including training and, and paid professional development, we, we would create spaces for, at the building level, for folks to confer and figure out what makes sense based on their own culture and the people in, in that space. I would add too, that this training involves people who were at the original in-person conference, people who have done independent ruler training as well as newbies, for lack of a better term, persons who are newer to ruler. So it was spectrum of knowledge.
Yeah, and I, I would just add, so we have a shared understanding of the timeline. So in two thousand nineteen, we sent a team of educators to an in-person training in, right? That was spring of two thousand nineteen. For an in-person training, representatives and teams from every one of our schools. And then in two thousand nineteen, twenty, the focus was adults. But since two thousand, school year two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, it's using those resources in the classroom and, and teachers being able to identify it in themselves so they can model it for students, but also that students and families have access to those resources.
How do I say this? Well, we had a really strange two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, so was that a, uh, relevant time for implementing these concepts? Or are we really picking it up for real now, for real now that the kids are back in, in touch with us physically?
It was a challenge and interrupted how, just as we have unfinished teaching and learning, we have unfinished components of the implementation, like resources for caregivers and parents. That is really good that I would like us to highlight more. I remember, um, we ordered books that align with all of the units on their platform. They arrived, um, to my office on March twelfth, two thousand twenty. And we all know what happened on the thirteenth. So those were delivered to schools, the, you know, the later. Um, but that's the kind of thing that, you know, there's a lot of excitement and momentum that of course was interrupted, that we have to nourish.
How, how, I mean, pandemic, okay, but I, I just, I cannot even fathom the world our students live in, uh, as a adult mind, like, it's not just mass shootings anymore. It's like innocent people shot every other day. And I, like, it's taking a toll on everyone's mental health. So, I mean, how are we supporting students in a time where adults can't even make sense of the world? Like, is that, what strategies are we learning? I'm going to do a really weird thing, but before I forget, because I will, the Atlantic article that's in board docs, if we can find a way to scan it, because you need a subscription. Yeah, okay.
Most definitely. That's, that's a really great question, and it's actually kind of a big question, which I'm not sure we're going to be able to fully attend to, um, here now. Certainly, our work around social emotional learning is just one element or component of it. It's reflected in our priorities around staffing, mental health staffing, is reflected around our partnerships with communities, agencies like Tompkins County Mental Health, where we're embedding or co-locating those providers. It's the way we're trying to facilitate access to services and supports in the community, strengthening our referral pathways and those relationships with agencies. Um, it's centering student voice and perspective, you know, about what they want. It's, uh, we're going to talk about drop-in hours at the high school. So it's, there's no one single thing, it's informed by staff, by caregivers, by students. Um, I think too, you know, we're, we're in the middle of collecting information from staff, caregivers, and students, which speak to some of their, um, social emotional needs in the school setting. That survey closes next Friday, I believe, next Friday. And so we have these regular touchpoints that we're, where we're soliciting feedback, whether it's quantitatively through a survey or qualitatively through our everyday interactions or... So it's a really great question that we probably should put on the agenda somewhere to really dive into and dedicate time to. But I think as we're alluding to, we're attending to it also through instruction.
I would, I would add that yes, we are seeing nationwide an increase of students expressing anxiety. Nationally, the five oh four referral rate has increased. It has increased in our district as well. And, um, this is where I do want to celebrate our board reps who meet with Carrie and I on mental health needs of students in this part of ICSD Learning Forward and genuine partnership and engagement with students. They said, wait a second, I don't want to have to plan my mental health needs. And they, we now have drop-in supports. And they have fully partnered with us to inform how that is going to look and sound. So you'll see, uh, this is an example of one of the posters. And students just the other day, uh, gave some, the reason it's at the welcome center, you know, they wanted a place they could access, and they have some ideas on different spaces that would be better to host these services. And so you'll see what the poster will edit and evolve based on, uh, our students' feedback.
I think we have one more critical component on our agenda to get to, literacy follow-up. But before we turn to that, let me just add to what Erin said. It's interesting being in this body at this age, Erin, this all feels like nineteen seventy-three to me again. Huge opioid crisis for us and a very con, condense air was heroin. Crime might be in schools now, but every day in our walks to home, we were hoping we didn't get hit with, you know, shrapnel from some crazy firefight going on. Vietnam vets coming home from, uh, Vietnam with a host of issues that, uh, that, that very few municipalities were willing to deal with in some structural way. So I say all that to say, I'm curious how we capture the experience and the resilience and the perseverance of folks who went through this with no support. Whether they're from small towns in Charlottesville, Virginia, or giant falling apart cities like New York. We've been here before. And we had to get through this without these supports. So there's, there's something to be mined there, to be mindful of. Uh, the, what's the opposite of deficit model? What's the phrase we often use to? How do we tap into the strengths and the asset bases of folks who, to whom this is just not that new? So, on that happy note, Pat, let's transition to literacy follow-up. But thank you. This is very insightful. And again, um, it's one thing for us to hear it as board members. I think the joy for us is going to be not necessarily seen and actually given our schedules, but, you know, we're partnering with you guys to learn more about when this is pushed out, what it looks and feels like. Maybe we have some teachers come to talk to us about some social workers, so we can get it from their perspective. And of course, students.
And these drop-in hours have started or they are starting? They have started? Okay, okay. We started doing something like this. Well, um, counseling and psychological services to Cornell started doing something like this many years ago, just putting counselors places, announced places all across campus for anonymous drop-in. And it's good to see that happening at the high school, although it can't be quite as anonymous, I think, there.
We can give them some disguises, keep some disguises in a box in the hallway. Alright, literacy follow-up. This says board responses from last meeting. What's that mean? Oh, we're supposed to do our homework. We're supposed to read all that stuff and come back with questions.
I did not do my homework.
I have to say, I did not either, Mary. I'm, I've been a bad student.
Mary, I have my homework right here.
Erin, lead us in this discussion.
There are three minutes left. I don't, I think we should, I think we should table.
Alright, we agree to table the literacy follow-up until the next session. Thank you.
Wait, do you have a particular assignment for the next session that you want to know about or just general commentary?
Last but not least, planning for...
Ed's curriculum committee should feel a lot like school.
That's a, that's a positive. That's a positive. Alright, next, four point four is planning for instructional rounds. So we need Lily here for that. Can we, uh, start to get some dates on the calendar for our next group visits?
And what are we visiting next time?
Can you read literacy classes? We need to read the, that, some of the, the programming that's shown basically that's based
Okay, yeah, great.
And that elective course and, um, or the credit bearing course as well. And then some models that are used for the topic of class. So I think for that, what we can do is send out a poll on like the days and times that it works best for all of these.
Great.
And we'll get those sheets again, the, uh, sheets roster.
And note catchers?
Note catchers, yes.
I never use those.
Yes. Hopefully.
I just keep my notes.
We'll try and schedule around my colleagues' busy schedules so we can all attend this time. so we can all attend this time.
But I will do my best.
But it's good to see that it's, it really changes your perspective and you see the teachers implementing these ideas in classrooms and seeing how the kids respond. It just, you know, we've moved so much stuff far more forward than it seems to us on this side of the table. And then we have them come in and tell us about ourselves, you know, what are we doing to get away budgetary implications? And it's, it's a nice way to follow up.
I'll say, one of the, one of the big points that I've noticed in our last instructional rounds was being able to witness the professional development during the school day that's been built, that's been built into these programs where teachers get to sit together, plan, share ideas, talk things out. I just think it's great that we, that teachers have been given that particular resource along with these instructor, these curricular challenges to implement.
All right, we are at our time. Look at that, six o'clock on the dot. Who's the man and women?
Who's the person, who are the people? Who are the people?
See, my generation, right? That's my generational...
We have to learn.
Fault line.